Snyderman.
Here.
Councilwoman Loftstead.
Here.
Councilwoman Scolera. Councilman Bouvier.
Here.
Councilman Sciovani.
Sciovani.
I'm sorry.
Present.
I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
That's all right.
It's nine.
All right, so we have a quorum here. All right, so we're gonna start with appraisal for the development rights value in the Southampton School District. We're joined by Kyle Collins, our Town Planning and Development Administrator, David Wilcox, our Town Planning Director, and Eleanor Brunswick, Appraiser. So, nice to see you Eleanor.
Thank you.
All right, Kyle, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll set it up. As the board may recall, back in the fall, we had hired Eleanor from MAI to do an appraisal of development rights within the Southampton School District. And the reason for doing that, we have approximately a little over fifteen development rights from the Conklin piece, which is on Cedar Lane in North Sea. And the intention is to sell those development rights, and prior to selling, we needed to know what the fair market value was. The reason for selling those development right was to replenish the Affordable Housing Fund, which was originally utilized to purchase a portion of this property, and then later on, determined by the Town Board to preserve the entire town. So, in order to reimburse the Affordable Housing Fund, Town Board chose to go through the process of putting those development rights that are coming off there and sell them to reimburse the Affordable Housing Fund.
So Kyle, the Board has never formally stripped the development rights from this property?
No.
Resolution wants to do it, that didn't go through, but the... So, we'd have to formally strip the development rights at some point by resolution?
No, I believe that they have been stripped from there.
I don't think they were. That's okay.
Yeah, they were.
They were, we have a resolution.
It was a joint resolution to take the rights off, put them in the bank, and to give them to the housing authority.
So, you're just cleansing the fund?
But there was an issue with that, I remember, because at one point, we were thinking of selling the portion that was supposedly for affordable housing to generate the money, and then instead, we said, "No, we'll just sell the development rights." You remember this? This all came up when Spion Commons was... It was originally fifty-one units, then we reduced it down to thirty-eight units, but we needed to bring some subsidy in to make the numbers work. There was like a million dollar shortfall, a million and a half. Eventually, the Attorney General of State of New York came up with some money, but I had looked to the Conklin piece to fill that gap. There was kind of public controversy around it. Some of the neighbors were very upset with the idea, thought it was preserved. The property itself, a third of the acquisition, came from the Affordable Housing Fund.
It was originally...
Two-thirds, two-thirds, thank you, two-thirds.
Yeah.
But it was never... It was not a meets and bounds description or something of where that was. And then there was a resolution that I had seen, but it had never been executed. So, the development rights had not actually been stripped. Maybe there's a relation, resolution to do it, but it wasn't fulfilled. That's my recollection.
I don't think that's correct, but we can look into that. Today, it's not about that, today's about the appraisal and see what those are, and whatever steps we need to take, we'll take those steps.
Okay. Kathleen?
Any other questions before we turn this over to Eleanor?
We'll look into it, Mr. Supervisor.
Okay.
As you indicated, there was a final step that needed to be taken in terms of recording the TDR and the conservation easement, and we're not sure that that actually happened.
Yeah, I don't think that...
That hasn't happened.
Right, that's the piece that hadn't happened. So, that... Because I think the resolution we were discussing was to rescind that resolution.
Correct. And that resolution got withdrawn.
That resolution got withdrawn. So, that resolution's been passed, but it's never been finalized.
Effectuated.
Okay. All right, sorry Eleanor. So, then we hired you to figure out what the actual value of...
Of a development right in accordance with three thirty-nine, the density incentive provisions.
Can you explain what a development right is? What you can do with it? Because that's gonna help determine what the value is, obviously.
Well, okay.
You obviously did that work.
A development right is basically that use set or utility that can be taken from a property and used for... Based on its density and bulk and the zoning, of course. It's...
Specific to a school district, right?
Specific, in this instance, to the Southampton School District.
Right, so you couldn't use a development right, let's say, from the Hampton Bay School District to add a carriage house in Southampton?
That's right.
Okay, but that's one of the things you can do, add a carriage house, right?
Yes, so there were three...
Clear more land.
Correct. Right, so we... So, basically, I looked at the code, and I then did an analysis from an appraisal perspective, of course, on how to arrive at the various development rights that could be applied to the density incentives. One being an increased yield subdivision or an undersized lot subdivision. Two, a carriage house density. Or three, a non-residential density incentive. And the non-residential would cover all of the non-residential, all the commercial and industrial districts. So, it was a very broad-based type of assignment. And I then went about each section of the density bonus in valuing each component, if you will, and arrived at a value for that development right, if it was for an increased lot or yield subdivision or for a undersized lot subdivision. I came to a value, because one development right equaled one housing unit, one dwelling.
Can they also be used as a sanitary credit? Let's say you're a restaurant, you're trying to get more seats.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
So, the health department does recognize them?
Yes, it does, that's right.
And that's part of the non-residential component.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I address that, right?
Absolutely.
In that component of the appraisal. So, the first thing I did was I looked at all... And I went back to January first, 2014, and I tracked sales of all the lots, for instance, in the different zoning districts. And I analyzed all of them, and I came up with median prices, and I arrived at what I considered was a market value of a value for a development right, if it were applied, to get another lot. So, whether it be because of an undersized lot subdivision or whether it be for a increased yield.
Does that apply in the villages too, or only in the town?
Only in the town.
Only in the town?
Only in the town.
Okay.
Okay, so then that was the first analysis. The second...
Excuse me for a second, yeah?
Yes.
For health department, may be a different story. But as it relates to our zoning, we don't have zoning authority. But if you're using it simply for health department, it could potentially be used for, in the village.
Right.
Sorry Eleanor.
That's okay. Then, the next component was a carriage house. Now, that was a little trickier, because carriage house is a great incentive, actually, but it's not that easy to find in the marketplace, the value of what that add-on would be.
Nobody sells them once they... You don't sell a carriage house.
Right, so we're looking at the land, actually.
Sell a house with a carriage house.
Right, so you're looking at the... If someone had the property and they were able to put another carriage house, what would they pay for that ability? And it's really land, so I had to back into arriving at the value. I did that in a few different scenarios.
You know, with the lack of affordably priced housing right now. I mean, businesses are struggling to find workers because of the housing issue.
Yes.
I would think a carriage house would be particularly valuable for somebody who's looking to find a place to house their own employees.
Yes.
Their caretakers.
It could be a very... Absolutely. Right. So, I did analyze extracting that finding sales, for instance, houses that had a carriage house compared to ones that did not. I extracted it. I also did a whole residual methodology because of the lack of data, using rentals, capitalizing that rental, deducting a cost of construction.
This is why we hired you.
Yeah, and then we arrived at a value. Okay, that was the carriage house.
Help me understand why we're so specifically focused on a carriage house and how that gets transposed here to what we're, you know, the ultimate goal, what we're trying to do.
Because we... The development rights, you have to determine where they're going to land. And three thirty...
And for the public's edification, because it's very...
Yeah, three thirty-nine identifies where you can utilize a development right. And one of those options is for a carriage house. In order to get a carriage house, you have to meet certain lot standard sizes. And in effect, if you meet those standards, you can go right to the building department with a development right and, in effect, get a second dwelling unit on your lot.
One way to think of it, John, would be like a coupon.
Well, I meant it for the public.
Yeah. And I mean this for the public, too, not for your... So, one way to think about it is like a coupon. You need to know what stores you can use that coupon in and what you can get with that coupon. And that's sort of the same thing. Where can it be used? What is the value of that use?
Right, I mean, it's tricky, because I've done this for some other towns, as a matter of fact, but it's going to a specific receiving area. And that, I think, might be where you were thinking also of this, because specifically then, you would look at that particular analysis of that receiving lot. And then what would the add-on be for that, having it or not having it? I've done that in the town of Huntington, that type of thing. But this is a general broad brush, what's the value of development right? And there's a lot of different components to this where somebody could apply it to.
I mean, at the end of this, there's an auction. So, let's say, just use the coupon analogy, let's say it's a twenty dollar coupon. Somebody may pay fifteen dollars for that twenty dollar coupon. And if that's the highest price, that's the highest price. They're not... They might not pay full value. But we're trying to determine full value, so we can set a price at the auction.
Right.
And one of the things, and Kathleen may wanna jump in, you know, because it's an asset that the town holds. We can't sell it for anything less than market value. Right? Because we can't give away that asset, right? So, that's why we had to determine what the market value was for these.
We can't sell it less than market value?
No. It's like any other, as Kyle indicated, it's like any other town asset. So, you can only sell it for fair and adequate consideration, which we arrive at by an appraisal.
What if... What if we can't get somebody to pay for fair market value?
Well, the market will dictate that, but I find that hard. I mean, it's...
Because isn't ultimately that how you determine fair market value? Is what the market is willing to pay for it?
Yes, and I personally don't foresee that problem. There's a need for these, and the market dictates that price. So, I... We can talk about that if the opportunity, if that happened, but I'm not sure that that will happen.
It's more about the assessment.
I have an example of this happening. The Pine Barrens Commission just put up ten Pine Baron credits up for sale, and they established the value... I forget how they did it. But they established the value. They went out and they didn't get it, so they rejected all bids. Now, they're gonna go back out, and I think they went back and tried to determine what the value, and they're gonna put it back out. So, that could happen.
Right, then you...
So, we would just have to, you know, and then sharpen a pencil or something. But based on what our analysis is today, that's... We're utilizing that in our notice to bidders.
I have a question. So, you have the average here of two seventy, two hundred and seventy-five thousand?
We're not even there yet.
I know.
You're dropping ahead.
We're getting there, right.
But we're talking about fair market value, but the fair market value for residential lot analysis would be four hundred and ten. So, I understand why you're averaging it, but doesn't that mean that somebody's getting a really good deal and somebody isn't?
Maybe.
Well, what we did is exactly what...
I think that's why Kathleen said we don't think that there's gonna be a problem here.
Okay.
I did...
I haven't even gotten to that point.
I did apply a discount. I did apply a discount.
Okay.
Okay, because is the market gonna be paying a million dollars for, you know, a development right to put another lot somewhere? And my... I don't think so.
Do you have, Eleanor, are there actual sales of development rights that you can track to, or no?
No.
Okay, so that makes it tricky.
That would have been...
Yeah, it would have been helpful. Okay, let me kick it back to you to finish your analysis.
So, yeah, so basically, then, that was a carriage house and analysis that I just explained, the two different scenarios. And then when it got to the non-residential, that was a... The way I did that was also, there were two different ways to look at that. You could increase your gross building area by two to ten percent. Okay, so, how do I... How did I figure that out? You had to... One of the requirements, a criteria, was that the density incentive had to have a lot area minimum of one acre. So, I looked at all of the commercial properties in the school district of Southampton, and I found everything that was over one acre. And I came to a mid... I averaged what all of the data was, and it came to like one point seven five acres. I ended up then applying a... Basically, it was a... Applied a rent per square foot. Again, this was a rental analysis in which I was able to then take out your... Come down to a net income, capitalize that into a value, and then take out the cost of construction for that, come to a value based on that. In terms of the... I also then looked at the three hundred gallon per day health requirement, which was the sewage disposal analysis, and I based that...
On residential basis or on commercial basis?
Only commercial. So, that was on the commercial basis. And I looked at, for instance, if someone wanted to add a wet use onto a shopping center, which would be something similar to a restaurant, which would be something that, in the town of Southampton, would be more realistic in terms of a choice as to what they would want to use.
Let's say the village, right?
So, there we did, you know... I ended up doing a whole analysis on the restaurants, came to a value based on restaurant uses, and actually came to ultimately a price per seat basis and deducted the cost to construct. And it turned out that it did not make economic sense to actually construct. The... It was over the... The amount was more to construct than it was to actually buy the value of what it would be to add on to the sewage for that particular...
So, when you looked at that on the commercial side, because something I always have trouble with is what their maximum allowable occupancy, and that really has a lot to do with the sanitary credits on that.
That's right. So, I used it basically for the restaurant, and it was based on a seat, ten gallons per day per seat. And then I figured out how much gallonage it would take in order to have the additional... This was based on one point seven five acres, because that was the average of the area of all of the lots in Southampton that exceeded the one acre minimum requirement.
So, was that averaged over the... Over a year, because we have such seasonal fluctuation in that regard?
No, I did not. I broke it down, basically, I arrived at... I multiplied that, which was the way the engineers figured it out, at three hundred gallons per day times the acreage. And then it gave me a certain allowable gallon.
There are restaurants that possibly could reconfigure without having to build. Let's say it's a forty-seat restaurant, they could change the table sizes and...
Yes.
Get up to a sixty-seat restaurant.
Definitely, and that would have an impact on this, because the cost of construction is so much variable.
When Bay Burger was first opening, they purchased a Pine Barrens credit or a sanitary credit or two. So, there was a need for that kind of thing. There may be other restaurants that have tried to increase their seating...
Yes.
Within an existing building.
Correct. Yeah, definitely.
But not to discredit what you did. It sounds like that may not be the highest and best use of the credit, so...
Right, well, you know, we still came up with, based on just adding because of the two to ten percent allowable increase in the gross area, we did... There was an add-on value to that, and I arrived at actually two hundred and ten thousand for the non-residential. So, I... For the carriage, it was... This is all summarized in the beginning of the report. And I did apply a discount factor, but the carriage house was two hundred, the lot was four hundred and ten, the non-residential was two ten. And then I took an average of all of them, the analyses, basically, and I came up with the two seventy-five.
That's much higher than I was anticipating. Just because I just... I was thinking Pine Barrens credit, which typically goes between seventy-five thousand and a hundred thousand.
But you can't use... There's a lot to evaluate here.
And you can't use Pine Baron credits east of the canal. This is Southampton, so lots go for a lot more here.
Well, I mean, it's good news if you can actually get that number. So, what... How many, is like thirteen credits?
Fifteen point one-three.
And you've done this, I don't have to calculate. Fifteen point one-three times your number is what?
I can do it if you want.
You didn't, nobody's done that.
I think I did, but I didn't write it down.
Times the two hundred and seventy-five thousand?
Yeah.
That's four million, one sixty, seven hundred and fifty.
That would be an absolute home run for our program.
For our affordable housing program.
If we can see those numbers. I... I'm doubtful that we'll see those numbers.
Okay, so that's a discounting, you know...
But if we don't, we can always look at the actual market conditions and adjust this, right?
That's right.
Okay.
So, did you do like a hypothetical there? And once you did your valuation, and look at our assessment, and do you see, you know, did you see any discrepancy, you know, big changes in that? I mean, just to test your methodology?
In terms of the values, for instance, on the lots, it was easy to see that, because you're at a hundred percent assessment on the lot values. So, that's really... And the number that I started with, which was an average, and actually, this could be updated, in fact, because this analysis ended up ending in twenty eighteen. So, now we have more data, and we could go and see if there are more sales to add to this that might end up changing it. But the average actually turned out to be about eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for only over, a little bit over, an acre in size for the averaged lot sales.
That's why I'm like... I agree with Kathleen. I don't foresee that we will have a problem selling these.
Stat, that's the point.
I hope you're right. Well, you would know how many people are in a position or looking for development rights. If we're the only game in town, this is... We're the only place you're gonna be able to go to get these things. If you have some... If you have... If you know that lots of lots are looking for carriage houses, which maybe they are, they'll... Should sell pretty easily. It's just been my experience, it's been very few people who dabble in this end of the real estate market. You know, we know of one who does this all the time, but it doesn't make a good auction if you have one person.
And it's only been for a certain program, which is our old file map program. There's actually two people who dabble in it. But this is a larger program and really hasn't been... Really been utilized.
Could we promote it prior to the auction, so that people know? Because, you know, you may end up with one person buying them all, but you may end up with, you know, somebody just really needs one. They'll bid on one, right?
Well, we've put together a notice to bidder, and we're saying the minimum purchase is a half a development right. But I agree with you, and as part of that notice to bidder, we have a draft that we prepared, and I was thinking about that, actually, is we... In that notice to bidder, we're gonna describe what you can use these development rights for, so it is as a, you know, an advertising campaign to make sure that people know what this whole program's about.
Yeah, because it's difficult to explain and difficult to understand. That may be why people shy away from it, because they don't really understand it. I... I'm just, you know, it's gotta be laid out in really careful terms.
But we don't really, you know... East of the canal, unlike the Pine Barrens, they have a clearing house and all that stuff. We've had a bank. Right now, our policy has been utilized primarily to create affordable housing purposes. And the Town Board's policy has been, if you're creating affordable housing unit, and usually it's for health department purposes, the board will give you the, provided that unit's in perpetuity is affordable. So, that's been... But there hasn't been a big market, even... Although some people do hold credits, and we, you know... There hasn't been a big market for selling those credits outside the Towns Bank.
I didn't hear any mention about clearing, and I know that that's a big deal for people that, you know, some people, they're very limited as to how much lot area they can clear. This would allow you to expand your clearing, wouldn't it?
It's... That's a little bit more great. You're absolutely right. The planning board has taken as part of the site disturbance plan that they can approve is the use of Pine Baron... Oh, not Pine Baron, of development rights. Pretty much is what they've done, though, is they've... The clearing has to be in proximity, a certain proximity to where the area that's cleared. You can't take it... So, there's no... It's really up to the planning board on it.
Oh, it's not within the school district, per se?
No, because no impact on the school district. So, if you are close to the line, but they do, usually it's within...
Within a recharge area.
No, typically, it's usually within a mile of the site. Whatever site that's over-cleared, they're not... They wanna have that... Either they...
Well, you'd wanna know from the planning board, right, prior to purchasing, whether you'd be able to use that.
That's right.
And how... What's the trade-off? So, obviously, the development right ties back to a lot that isn't gonna be cleared at all.
That's correct.
So, we're basically taking some of that clearing. So, how much of the clearing is transferable with the right?
Well, it depends on what your lot size is. Our clearing restrictions are based on lot size. So, you have to have at least the...
Eighteen percent increase, or is it...
At least a one-to-one, you know, say if you're over-cleared by ten thousand square feet. Whatever the lot that you're sending from, you have to have at least ten thousand square feet of clearing permitted on that sending site.
So, if you're sitting there and you're... You've over-cleared, and you have a choice to revegetate, which is probably very expensive, or buy this credit, transfer it, and then you could then enjoy that cleared area and not have to revegetate it. That's valuable, I would think, to certain people.
Oh, yeah. People have actually bought and didn't even use... I mean, the concept is the same, but they just buy fee simple, put a conservation easement on it, and then basically sometimes donate it to the town. They still hold, they don't have to necessarily. And then transfer that, and that's through approval by the planning board.
Okay.
We actually did a calculation in our allocation letter. Each development right from this property would allow for four thousand square feet of clearing.
So, after the auction, because, you know, the clearing thing is more complicated, and you need to know if it's within a mile or whatever, and you need planning board approval. If after the auction, we haven't sold all the credits, they could be still for sale, right? You come to us...
Absolutely.
And purchase it as long as it's, you know, at the fair market value, right? We could sell them at fair market value.
You're charged with selling them at fair market value.
What?
You're charged with selling them at fair market.
Right, don't be... You understand, like, after... Let's say we sell four of these at auction.
Absolutely.
Leave them in the bank.
And so, we have them in a bank?
Yeah.
You're trying to breathe some life into the bank.
Yeah. Now, here, my question is, is how long does this market value stay into effect before the bank has to upgrade the market value?
There's, you know, six months to a year before you get an update.
I was gonna say annual update.
Yeah, get an update, exactly. I agree with you.
We would have to go through the same process of having it...
Well, it would just be an update to the appraisal, because the work has already been done.
Exactly.
So, it wouldn't be too difficult.
The update would be a much different, yeah, procedure, because you have the whole format now.
And you'd also just take the data for that past year?
Exactly, you're just adding up, right, exactly. Yeah.
Does it come with any sort of...
This is good for at least the year.
Just sort of thinking outside the box here as forms of incentive for if there is a development in this case towards alternative energies or control, you know, condensing that, cluster system, you know, all the things that we talk about doing. Is there a way to incentivize that when they purchase those credits and are working towards another affordable housing development?
You mean if somebody came in for a change of zone or something?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, again, you'd have the bank, right? So you could say you're coming in, and if the, if the board felt it appropriate as part of a change of zone application, then you have to get a certain number of development.
So that would remain with the board?
It can be a tool.
Yeah.
To help.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Offset densities that are there, you know, all those things.
Is it possible for an entity to come in to purchase all of them and then hold them and not sell them and just extinguish them themselves?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Could they hold them and resell them?
And that's, that's a good question.
Yeah.
In other words, if they go in, they see this price, then they own them and.
Right.
Well, conversely, they take the risk that it would fall below market.
It's like, you know, holding a stock certificate, you know?
That's, that's, that's risk intense, in my view.
Well, because it costs the money, you know?
The, the price of land's not going down, right? So basically, that development right is one lot.
Yeah, one lot worth 275,000 in the Southampton school district.
Certainly in Southampton, it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, this is the prime of the prime, really.
Southampton school district, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't seen any devaluation in a long time.
So there's no, no transfer to the CPF fund? No? All right. Just thinking out loud?
No, and that's, that would be complicated, because that was the first thought with this Conklin property is to just have the CPF fund buy the two-thirds that it had, and we couldn't do that, because the CPF fund cannot buy land that's owned by the town. I don't think the CPF fund could buy development rights that were owned by the town either, so, right?
Correct.
Although, if we, if our water quality board acquires properties for installation of cluster systems and so forth, there, I could see where there might be some little friction relative to the CPF law. And this, if somebody wanted to actually produce, put in a septic or a cluster system as a third party to serve a dead neighbor. Ah, never mind. I'm thinking in another space.
All right. So what's next? We have a value, we have, now we hold an auction.
Yes, we're, we have a prepare resolution, should be in two weeks. We could put it on to release the notice to bidders.
Okay. And then we, we hope that we get our number. Okay.
Hannah will be very happy.
Yeah. And if we don't get our number, then we revisit.
That's what I was just going to ask you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, then we revisit it. But I think the best thing to do before we devalue it is to really try to promote it.
Yeah.
Make sure everybody knows the value, why this is a good thing. It, it's interesting when you set a value for, for something, let's say you're trying to do a carriage house. You cannot do it for any amount of money, right? You can't build a carriage house. If you're, let's say, on a five-acre lot, zone five-acre lot, you've got your estate, you want to do a carriage house, you're out of luck. You, with a million dollars, you're out of luck, $5 million is out of luck. But with this credit, you can do it, so.
It's very valuable.
So it could be, it could be very valuable.
Yeah.
To the right, to the right person, in the right, in the right condition. So there's not like another way to get there. This is the only way to get there. Variance, possibly, a variance from the zoning board, thank you, might be another way to do it. No guarantee.
There is a provision in 33167, when somebody comes to the ZBA, that they need to create an undersized lot, or that they need to demonstrate that the variance can't be obtained unless there is, that there are no development rights within the school district that they're.
Right, you're supposed to, that's part of the law.
And that's why we have it in 330-9.
You can't achieve it by another means, that you've exhausted other possibilities.
Yeah.
Which we should make sure the zoning board is aware of that, because they could.
Planning board tells them all.
They could be devaluing, they could devalue our credits.
Yes.
By handing out variances.
Right. That's right.
Issuing. Handing out.
Issuing. Kathleen, were you going to say something about that? About the planning board? Okay, so, all right.
Okay.
All right. All right, so let's go ahead, let's, let's forge ahead. Thank you, Eleanor, as always.
You are very welcome.
Very.
It's a lot of work.
It was an interesting project.
Great.
Well-stated.
Great methodology, unassailable.
Thank you.
Really, that's why we like you.
Okay. Thank you. It was a pleasure to meet everybody and see everyone again.
Thank you.
Okay.
This was a complicated task that you took on. That's why it's taken a while.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Unforeseen.
Do some updates.
Oh, oh, because 11 is our next thing?
Yeah. Kyle's going to get Janice.
I could, sure, let me.
I guess.
So, let me pass these out. This is Good Ground Park on stage. This is the schedule of performances and other events at Good Ground Park for 2019. Tommy John, thank you. For you. Looks like this is coming out of CRC. I'll take one. Let's see what we've got here. Starting May 4th, oh, that's got changed.
Yes.
The Earth Day is moved from May 4th to May 18th. So, Earth, Earth Day Festival, I guess it's, it may rain this weekend, so they're, they're switching the Earth Day Festival at Good Ground Park to May 18th. But there's other events in May, too. The Spring Migration Bird Walk on the 11th, candlelight, oh, on, also on the 11th that night, 7:00 PM, there's a, the Second Opioid Vigil. This was really a powerful event that was held last year, where really in honor of all those who lost their lives to the opioid epidemic. You know, it's often these people unfortunately die in the shadows, people are uncomfortable, or there's such a stigma around opioid use and addiction that there's very little, you know, and it's basically just people seem to move on without really having closure. So we had this candlelight vigil last year, and a lot of people came out and told stories about brothers they lost, or sisters, or mothers, or children. And some of them said, this is like the first time they've ever talked about their son, and he was a good kid, who got hooked on an extremely addictive substance. And there were tears, and there were hugs, and it was a lot of support, you know, and we had resources there, people there who could help. And, you know, I felt like it drew people into this circle who were not maybe coming to our forums that we were holding, that were more educational, and, you know, where we were talking at the audience. This was really, everybody coming onto the stage and just sharing, and it was really moving. We set up 400 candles in a little, like those tea light candles, for all the victims in Suffolk County of the op, for the, for the prior year. And then we had, we had this, a circle of 19 candles, larger candles, for all those who had died in the town of Southampton that year. And then we also added a candle in the center for, we had at that point, one opioid death last year. So we had these three circles, and then, of course, outside that were the circle of people gathered, and it was fairly, it was a little rainy that night that didn't seem to stop anybody. I don't know the outer ring anymore. I know that the Suffolk County, the death toll went down from that 400 number in, that was from 2017, so 18 is, is down. I know we dropped significantly, too. We went from that 19 down to six. We had six deaths, six too many, but, and we have also had a death this year. So I believe we're going to do the same thing with the candles, but, you know, I urge the board to come to that. It's a really, it's a really nice, a really nice event. We might have some music, it'll be very light, like acoustic, more meditative, a really, really nice event. And then also in May, on the 29th, the Senior Health and Fitness Day, from 11, from 10 to 1, co-sponsored by the Southampton Senior Center. You know, and, you know, I guess at some of these updates, I'll tell you more about other events as they get closer, but lots of great music. Nancy Atlas is coming back. She's, I know, very popular, and we've got the Eagle River Band, they played recently at a benefit out here, they're an Eagles band, and lots of movie nights, and lots of great events at Good Ground Park. So, that's that. Let me pass this around. This is for ribbon cutting coming up for Ponquod Pavilion. It's coming out great. This is going to be, weather permitting, on Monday, May 20th, 2019, at 11:00 AM. And there's going to be coffee and some, some new foods. There is going to be a concession there, I don't know if it'll be open for that, but they'll be providing food. I believe it's, the concession is tied in with Dockers somehow, it's the same, same people. But the new beach, it's not a new pavilion, it's been there, but the refurbished, renovated pavilion, Monday, May 20th. This is open to anyone, I know some people had some concerns that it was an invite only, it's not an invite only.
Yeah, we're just trying to get a number on who may be attending, but anybody can attend.
Right, just so we can kind of have enough food to go around.
Right.
But please join us. This is, this is a, a community facility, and the board has been really committed to fixing it up. It hadn't been really touched since the 60s, but now it's going to feel like a brand-new beach pavilion, so, and the deck is much larger, it's 30% increase in the deck, it's all EPE lumber. The parking area, I don't, has that been done, too? I haven't been knowing in a while. I'll have to check, but there were a lot of elements to this capital project that we did, and by all accounts, it's really coming out well, so come join us. All right. Other updates. I've, I got a note from the trustees of the Bridgehampton Museum. So they have been, you know, we've been working on the Nathaniel Rogers House, and I probably should talk about this more when Lisa Combrink is here. We've been using CPF funds to repair the Nathaniel Rogers House, but the, there's a group of trustees that have been raising money for all the things that are non-CPF. And they've raised a significant amount of money. The architect that's working on this, we basically staged this in two stages. There, we were going to do the cupola later, and the balustrades later. We're being told by the architect that that's going to add a substantial amount to the cost to do that later, because they'll have to roof it now, and then they'll have to cut a big hole into the roof. So they are asking us to go ahead and pay, we were going to pay for those things, but to pay it now rather than later, so we don't end up with an extra cost. So, and the cost of the cupola and the balustrades, well, the cupola is 150,000, and the balustrades are 350,000. So it's a half a million dollars in expense from the CPF program. What I don't know is if we can do it this year, because as you guys are aware, there's only a certain amount of CPF dollars that can go toward these kinds of projects in a given year. And if we've already hit that, I think it's a 10%.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
I'm a story.
Sorry?
10%, up to 10%.
Up to 10%. So we need an accounting first to know if this is something that we can do this year. If we can do it, then we have to decide whether we want to do it. You know, it is a beautiful building, you know, the costs are, I, I think have been higher than anybody would have anticipated, partly, I think, because they are painstakingly restoring this building to very precise historical standards, and it has added to the cost at the end of the day. Oh, and here's Lisa. Hi, Lisa. I actually jumped in on, on something that I could use you on. Sorry, I'll throw you right in. I'm talking about the Nathaniel Rogers House. I circulated a memo that the architect has said that if we wait on the cupola and the balustrades, that although that's something that we plan to fund, we were going to do it as a second phase, and they're saying that's going to add substantial cost to it, because they'll have to reopen the roof, they'll have to close the roof, finish the roof, and then cut the hole for the cupola, and I guess do whatever they have to for the balustrades. And I think the balustrades encircle the square, the flat roof. So, the first question, though, before we can decide whether this is something we want to fund now rather than later, is whether we have maxed out on CPF. So we're only allowed to spend up to 10% in a given year on it. I don't know if that's something you've had an opportunity to even look at.
I haven't, I do have the numbers, though, I have to look at them more carefully, but I, my understanding is that CPF cannot pay for this portion of the project, so.
Oh, really? You mean it doesn't meet the histor?
I don't think so.
Oh, I thought it did.
Something to do with when it was, it wasn't there.
Okay.
At the, at the, you know, at the relevant time period.
Okay.
So CPF cannot pay for that, and.
Oh, okay. That's, that changes a lot, because.
It's historically out of sync on chronology of the building.
Chronology, right. Now, the other thing is that we have litigation with one of the vendors, so I need to discuss that with you in executive session, I think, and how that might relate to this.
Okay.
So.
Okay, well, that's, that's important.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, you know, based on the memo, I thought that CP, this was something CPF was anticipating and could pay for, but we're going to do it as a phase two. So let's get, let's make sure on that. And if not, you know, we'll have to go back to.
Right.
The trustees of the, the Bridgehampton Museum, and maybe they can raise the money for it, I, I don't know. Or we, we can discuss using non-CPF money, but, and figure out when the appropriate time is for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood, yeah? Good.
All right, so.
Jan, I just saw Janice, I think she's, she's on her way.
Okay, so let me see if there's any other updates that I can do real quick. I'll remind the public that we do have the South Fork Commuter Connection running. We have, you know, two trains in the morning heading westbound, and two trains heading, heading westbound in the, in the afternoon. And if you want to avoid the traffic, and the traffic is building up every day, you have a great way to do it, it's very affordable and very convenient, and we do have the shuttle service that will take you from the train station to your place of work for, for most people. So it's a great program, and we urge people to take advantage of it. One other update, sort of related to sitting in traffic on Sunrise Highway, there, as the board is aware at this point, the Shinnecock Nation is progressing an economic development project to create what they call monuments, two monuments, one on the north side and one on the south side of Sunrise Highway. They are 61-foot-tall structures. They have the Shinnecock Nation's emblem illuminated in the top portion, and then a 20-foot-by-30-foot illuminated electronic billboard, like a, you know, like a giant TV screen, so allow for moving advertising. They plan to sell advertisements on these things. They are well into construction, they have been out there. We are, the board has submitted a, a letter to the Shinnecock Nation, asking them to, to halt construction, that we feel that they're out of character with our community, and certainly violate the spirit of our, our laws that are, you know, limit the height of structures and prevent light pollution. We have issued a stop-work order, which is being ignored. We have reached out at multiple levels to state DOT, the Federal Highway Administration, various elected leaders at the state, and federal level. And, you know, we are researching many things pertaining to this. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but progress seems to be continuing unabated. They, you know, there was, I did have a meeting, Tommy John was in attendance with members of the tribal council. It was really, you know, from their perspective, just to inform us of what their plans were. And, you know, I did get a text yesterday that, on one of the questions about whether they'd be illuminated all the time, they are telling me now that after a certain hour, the, the light levels will be diminished significantly. But other than that, this is, this is what they plan to do, and we're looking at our options. They believe these are sovereign lands, that. They believe these are sovereign lands, that although not part of the reservation, that they have been owned by the Shinnecock Nation for a long time, and they believe that they're exempt or immune from our regulations. It is frustrating. I've been trying to appeal to the, kind of, the conscience of the Shinnecock people to work with us on economic development plans that will improve their living conditions, that don't detract from our scenic beauty, and this is, I think, what draws so many people from all over the world to come to our area, to visit our area, enjoy our area, to build their primary residences and their summer homes. And it's unfortunate. I think a lot of people are upset now, and I think they'll perhaps be more upset as these signs continue to be erected. But I just wanted to make sure that the board and the public are kept in the loop here. We are doing what we can. Jim, I was just talking about the... Just updating the board on the progress of the electronic billboards...
Yes.
For Shinnecock monuments...
Sure.
That are being constructed.
Yeah.
You may see these giant poles going up. Those poles are... A single pole on each side is the main support structure. And then there are cross-members, and then the signs appear to be attached then to those cross-members. And I believe that the sign... Looking at the schematics, they're sort of at slight angles like this with the cross-member in the middle, with the main pole, rather, here. And then they sit like this. It's... Again, you all know my feelings about this. It's very upsetting, and we're doing what we can. Jim, is anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, just that we're waiting... We've been in communication, obviously, with the state DOT and with the Federal Highway Administration. The attorneys down there have been in constant communication with Federal Highway attorneys, and they are in communication with the Bureau of Innean Affairs to try to determine the status of the subject property. And that will determine whether they feel the state has the ability to enforce the billboard, the Federal Highway law. So we're waiting for that at this moment. I've been giving them as much information as I have, so they can help make that determination. So we'll see.
Anybody have any questions for Jim or I?
No, just that the Shinnecocks are proceeding under the concept that the local governments, the town and the county, have no jurisdiction.
Right.
So like the counselors, like Jim said, that, you know, we're waiting for action from the state if possible.
Yeah. The state has the responsibility, jurisdiction typically, to enforce billboards to outdoor advertising on areas such as this, that within 600 feet of a public highway like this. So it's typically the state's responsibility under the Federal Highway Act to enforce this type of application, yeah. It's a threat of losing federal funds if they don't. So the question is, though, can it... Do they have the authority in this situation because of the tribal lands or not? So we are waiting for a determination from Bureau of Innean Affairs on that as we speak.
Okay. So we're waiting on Janice. Sure. So let me see if there's anything else I can update you guys on.
I have something.
Okay. Tommy John, you wanna go ahead?
Sure. On May 18th, the Southampton Arts and Cultural Committee, we are going to be taking a trip to the Parish Art Museum, as well as the Dan Flavin Art Institute. That is open to the public. We're gonna be leaving at 10 o'clock. You should be very interested. So if you are interested in going on this tour, you can call my office or go online and contact us and get a seat on the bus. Or if you would like to take your own car, you could do that as well.
Where is it going to?
The Parish Art Museum and the Dan Flavin Art Institute.
Where's the Dan Flavin Art?
Not quite sure.
Okay.
It's in the area.
Yeah, nearby, as I understand.
Okay.
I've never been there, and so I'm looking forward to it.
No, that's...
Good morning.
That's great. And it's free for the public?
Yes.
It's free? Is there lunch provided?
I don't know. The last one... We did have lunch, and we are working on that.
Okay. That's great, Tommy John. Can you give me the date one more time?
May 18th.
May 18th.
Exactly.
All right. All right. So now we're gonna switch gears.
If you could just wait two minutes. I'm just waiting for...
All right, two minutes.
...to come to you.
All right. Let me see if I have another update of any kind. Well, John, you and I were at Senator Laval's environmental roundtable. That was... Senator Laval hosts this every year at the Culinary Institute out at Suffolk County Community College in Riverhead. And it's a great opportunity for elected officials to sort of hear from the movers and shakers in the environmental community about different issues. And one of the issues that sort of came up more than I've seen in the past was waste management. Not just sanitary waste from septic systems, but solid waste and recycling. And what are we gonna do with all the garbage? And how do we reduce packaging materials and have less waste to process? That was interesting. There was a... You know, it was a good conversation. Lots of people were there. It's a big room, and the table, kind of, is probably as big as this room right here in terms of it goes all the way around the perimeter. And you have different people sitting at the table. People like Kevin McDonald and Bob DeLuca and Andrew Spilka and all different environmental organizations. Adriana Esposito from Citizens Campaign for the Environment and...
As well as staff from DEC and state and federal.
Cornell Cooperative Extension was there. Lots of different environmental councils. It's a nice event to be able to attend, so...
Well, I thought it's really informative, and I think you're right. You know, we do discuss the waste stream issue quite a lot. It's becoming more and more burdensome to local municipalities, so talking about shared services and all. I'm heartened that a lot of local municipalities are considering some of the legislation that Councilman Lobstad had put... Had entered here for Southampton in an efforts to reduce our waste stream. So I think that's...
You're talking about the plastic scrub ban, which got a lot of applause from the...
Yeah, it did.
From the table for that.
And it was, you know, representing globally, you know, some 30% by volume in our waste stream. I think it's a huge savings, particularly for transport costs and all the other issues. But I'll have to...
On that issue, though, that's next Wednesday, right? That goes to May 8th? Yeah. So next Wednesday, that law is in effect, so... Go ahead, John.
Yeah. I mean, relative to that issue, the environmental impacts, obviously, there was a lot of discussion... Some discussion about... There's some sidebar conversations about vegetative waste management, the efforts that we're trying to do here. And the fact that some... Trying to establish a better chain of custody for understanding was contained in that vegetative waste. So sometimes it's not just vegetative waste, but things get into it through one reason or another. And there's some concerns about that. The farming community talks a lot about being able to... We're having trouble getting rid of this material.
Sure.
Or using it in a responsible way. Putting it back on fields, giving it to the farming community. But it needs to, you know, be understood that that material has a certain content and certain testing requirements to go into it to make that happen, so that it doesn't just become a place for waste material to get aggregated into it and then put on to... Back into the environment.
And of course, the processing of vegetative waste relates to our conversation about water quality.
Yes.
Which we can now segue into CPF water quality proposals.
You were doing... I just want to add one more thing.
Oh, man!
Yeah. You tried to get away with it.
I thought I stalled long enough.
Yeah. Well, I got a better segue.
Okay.
I sit on the Superstorm and Task Force and just finished the document. Hooray! It's a long 18-month. I think it has turned into a really good document. And I just... I'm gonna pat myself on the back, because we talked about this. I gave a lot of... It was hard to get people from the western part of the town to understand the needs and the different needs that we have here relative to coastal resiliency, storm resiliency, and so forth. And I think, I hope, that we got that strongly enough stated in this document when it comes up for public review. So I think we put ourselves on the map, at least relative to the issues that are important to us. And I just, you know, wanted to thank all the members on that task force. They worked hard, and I feel a little beat up, but I survived, so...
This is a county-wide task force?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
Okay.
So that's the segue to Ms. Shearer.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
So I really wanted... Lisa and I, you know, since she's our new CPF program manager and has kind of come in at the middle of this round, so to speak, we talked about, like, processes. And as you know, we're always looking to improve our process and be, you know, equitable and transparent and all these things. So we thought the... Today, really, I'm not here to really tell you everything about these projects. It's more about, like, how you wanna... It's more policy and how you want to do this and process. And so you understand what we got, and then how to move forward. And that's what I just want to talk to you about today. And then, obviously, each of these applicants would like to speak to you directly and present their projects and have questions in a public forum, where there would be a public hearing, and you can decide. But getting to that public hearing is really the question. Do you want to have some kind of elect to consider situation, where you decide whether they move forward? Or, you know, the advisory committee has its recommendations. Last time, we batched them all and put them forward. These are much more complicated and deserve their own time, so they need public hearings that they are able to provide that information to you, so you can understand that, of course, we're gonna give you our memo recommendations and funding recommendations as well. So I just wanted to tell you what we've got, and then sort of tell you what seems like it's ready to go, what we're still talking to the applicants about, and then we can talk about, you know, how you want to move these through the process, if that's okay. So I grouped this spreadsheet into the different types of projects that we have, and the three main categories... Wait a minute. Can I see something? This goes from stormwater... Waste water treatment. Okay. All right. I'm all right. Okay. Little moment of panic. I thought one of my columns didn't happen. The blue is different. Didn't print out well. So the first group is stormwater treatment projects. Then we have wastewater treatment projects. And then we have aquatic habitat restoration.
I see. They're not all the same.
They're not all the same blue, so for a minute, I just had a panic attack that page was missing.
Relax.
Sorry?
Hey, Jen.
Okay.
Take a deep breath.
So I also had a map prepared, so you can see, like, where are these projects and what areas we're talking about across the town are being proposed. They're not in any specific order, but when we go through them here, I'll point them out on the map, too. So the first one I have on here is called the Owl Life Creek Enhancement Project. And this is up in Neuk Road area. It's labeled by number five here, North Sea Road, Neuk Road. And this is being proposed by the Highway Superintendent, and they got a grant from New York State, Consolidated Funding Award Grant, but it required a match. There was a resolution by you that authorized the grant application. So they're asking now for the CPF to pay for that match.
Where is this?
This is in North Sea, North Sea Road. It's basically, they want to modify an existing culvert to right-size it, so the owl wives can run through the fish habitat and do some... It's kind of both. It's habitat restoration and stormwater.
So is there a scientific basis for this? I would suggest discussing this with Joyce Novak at PEP just before. We don't have, you know...
Oh, yeah. They all endorsed it. PEP, C-Talk, we have... They've submitted letters of endorsement.
And that would be useful to know on these things as you bring them forward. So, you know, we all see different things that are happening here and there, and just to be sure there's no conflict in what, you know, what we're...
Okay.
Is this the culvert that was collapsing?
I don't know if it was collapsing, but that's Trout Pond.
Yeah, Trout Pond.
But this is...
It's on Neuk Road.
This is like a culvert, and I don't want to represent... Like, that's kind of what I want. Like, I want them to be able to come in and explain it and show you all the pictures.
I just want to make sure it's not like a standard infrastructure replacement in highway that is being proposed as a water quality budget.
It's definitely a fish-friendly enhancer for enhancement for these owl wives, too. And they, from what my understanding, and again, it's gonna be them that shows... Tells you this, but they want to make this, like, box culvert, which has, like, the bottom of the culvert is like fish habitat. And then the owl wives are able to get through it. And this whole grant was approved by the state, basically. It's been vetted through the state for this purpose, as a water quality project. And this is the match. So they also...
So what is the metric? I'm trying to... And I guess they'll talk to us about that. I don't want to get into the grass, but I'm just trying to understand the metric involved with...
Yes. And that's... But, yeah. And that's what I'm saying. Like, I didn't want to get into, like, me describing all these projects. So that's the thing. Like, do you want each of these guys to...
Pound of nitrogen per dollar.
Yeah. Do you want each one of these entities to come to you in a work session format? Do you think they should go to public hearing and describe...
One more detail for certain.
We have the applications, of course, and I want to give you those. But I just want to understand what we're getting, and then you decide how you kind of want it to be.
So this is... It looks like a $610,000 ask?
It started as a 410, which would be the match for the total grant. Then they went out there, after they met with the advisory committee and we asked them a million questions, they went back out there and they went with a drone, and they were looking at... Because they're... How about an engineering firm doing this? It's not just the Highway Superintendent. It's really L.K. McLean is doing this work. They went out there and looked at it.
They're the consultants to the Highway Department?
Yes. So they went out there.
All right. See, that's the kind of thing I'm just confused about, because I don't know where the expertise stops and starts relative to...
As an engineering project, they put forward the grant application to the state. And so we... They realize that there's a significant amount of sediment. Now, you might decide you only want to pay for the match and not this extra component, that the head wall of this culvert thing is broken.
Well, I was about to ask whether that qualifies.
I don't know. And that they just literally asked me yesterday, can we add it on? So that's why I don't have enough information. We're gonna meet with them again, so, you know, so...
And this is the kind of thing that you would like some direction on when people come to you and ask... Or people, entities or individuals ask for different amounts of money.
Well, yeah. I mean, we want to understand how you want to handle this. Like, I have my ideas, but I'm so far... Last time, we've done this once. We did the one round. We batched them together, because they were relatively simple projects. And we did it all as one public hearing. These are now more significant projects, and they each require some level of scrutiny in and of themselves. So they should come forward.
But you did have televised meetings with the applicants individually.
That... We did that last time. This time, we just had more informal interviews, and we feel the televised presentations belong in front of you, you know?
Well, they are... They were in front of, at least, me.
Well...
So that's why I'm saying I actually learned a lot from watching that exchange and not being in the room.
Right. Right, we didn't do it that way this time because we thought they would do that for you, so you can hear it and understand it.
Well, I'm a little unclear, have all these been vetted by the Water Quality Committee?
We've reviewed all of them and scored them and rated them. Now, the question is, how do we bring them forward? Well, they're not, we're gonna give you a recommendation memo, and they may not be approved to the level they're asking for.
And you're saying, and the $200,000 additional that the Highway Superintendent has requested, that has not been vetted?
Not yet, no. So we need to have an additional meeting to look at that.
I mean, as an example with the West Hampton Beach project, you know, there was an administrative component of that that we didn't feel was appropriate to pay for the fund, so we took that out, I mean.
Right, oh yeah, we're gonna make those recommendations when you get to see the proposal and you can, you know. We're not at that stage yet.
No, I'm just trying to.
We've vetted them all and we've scored them all, just so you know where we've, what we've done so far. We also wanna make sure that as we go forward, we're having a process that you all want to have. And that's really the purpose of being here. It's how you want it to go, it's not just, we said so, you saw, you know, if you want it that way, that's fine. But I thought these are more significant and may require more scrutiny from you.
Are any of these multi-year?
Most of them aren't multi-year. Well, some of them are not, so let me just go through them.
Can I just ask, how much money is available? So that, I'm assuming we're gonna have to prioritize, or maybe not, if there's enough money available.
So, that's another question, that's a big question.
So the allocation of its, what is it, 20% of CPF revenues from the prior year? Or the year, two years ago, it's?
So it's about, it's, it basically, let's just assume for argument's sake, it's around $10 million. But you reserve $4 million off the top of that for water main extensions in East Quogue for the PFOA, PFOS situation. You also have $2 million encumbered for IA systems. So now you're down to six. We have land acquisitions that are pending, that we need to keep money, you know, these things take.
Water quality.
For water quality, for Riverside and easements and things like that, which you've.
How much is on that list?
I would set aside like 1 to 2, because we're trying to obtain the wetland parcels.
Up to 8, now that leaves $2 million.
Means about $2 million for this.
And the IA system installation?
That's covered in the $2 million. So you have about $2 million. If you were to prove everything adds up to about that, but there's some things on here that I'm gonna tell you about that really don't necessarily belong here and now.
Right.
So, so let me just get through this and then you can decide, you know, and I don't mean to confuse you. It's, I'm slightly confused. We just wanna make a really good process, and so.
Right, and the committee met twice over a two-week period and probably had these interviews divided basically in half, so spent probably four to five hours meeting with the different applicants.
And they're all really good projects and worth your time to hear them propose them to you. You know, we don't wanna be the only ones they.
All right, so let's go through.
So let's just go through. So this one has this.
Yeah, I just, I felt the process was pretty good before. So, you know, it sounds to me like the only thing that you might be suggesting is that the applicants appear in front of us personally rather than we view it through the televised, your televised system.
I think that, and I also think some of these may be worth having a work session with the applicant, and some may just be straight to public hearing, and let them have a presentation with you.
And you'll advise us of those?
And I'm gonna tell you right now which ones I think are work session worthy, and which ones I think should go to public hearing, and which ones I think need to wait.
And you need to decide on that process?
Yes.
All right, so let's try to get through some of it.
I'll just kinda get through this.
We'll probably interrupt you a little bit, but.
That's fine, and so that's the Owl Life Creek Enhancement Project. We think that at least the part that's been vetted by the state.
The match piece.
The match piece is something that you should consider. We can have it as a public hearing or a work session, it's at your, whichever one you want to do.
So that's not in here, you're gonna bring us that back in writing, so, you know.
When you decide which way you wanna go, I'm gonna give you a comprehensive memo of all our recommendations as far as funding awards and et cetera. All of these will have, I'm gonna tell you verbally.
Yeah, no, I get that, it's just there's a lot of, you know.
There's a lot of moving parts, and so you can understand my hesitation to make these judgment calls without you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure, I mean, it's really at your board, so.
So you're up to the second one.
The second one is straightforward, this is easy. The Village of Southampton, they're plugging away at their Lake Agawam management plan. This is just a simple drainage infrastructure project like we just saw on Jobbs Lane. This is just continuing it down, and they're putting in drainage infrastructure to capture stormwater runoff. You approved them of $292,000 last year, this year they're asking for $211,000. I would recommend they just go to public hearing.
Oh yes, though, I'm not, it seems like a lot of the water is sort of captured and sent toward Lake Agawam. So what are we doing here, we're not, are we now filtering it?
Yeah, we've asked them to put filters into the drainage.
Okay, that's what it is.
Yep, it's not only putting the catch basin, it's also inserting filters.
Those are sediment catches.
Yeah, like they're called Fabco or equivalent company.
Which it would appear that runoff is, and, you know, that's where I'll get into the details, that the runoff is a large factor involved in the problems.
So the water runs off now, you're catching it, but when you catch the water now, you're filtering it also. So you're getting it two directions.
And those are the in-place filters.
Before it runs straight into the lake, and you're getting it once.
Are they committed in the village to changing filtration media? Because you're pulling out hydrocarbons and other things, right?
Right.
But you need to change that.
Filter.
Filter.
They said they have the management and operational budget to do it.
It's actually very.
They handle the maintenance, they handle everything about it, and they're committed to that.
And it's an interesting system, and that's, you know, that's the part I would like to hear more about.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, like, some of this is something that you should hear about more than just us.
Yeah.
Okay, so this one's easy. This next one is something that was an error, as we seen the last time. The Village of Sag Harbor, as you know, last round you approved a series of rain gardens and various drainage for their downtown. All the numbers add up, but the bottom line number, they wrote 264, it was actually 22,000. They wrote the wrong number on the bottom, and all of us reviewed it a million times over and no one really.
So we underfunded them?
We underfunded them by 22,000.
We approved the project, but we didn't give enough to complete it.
Right, so that's pretty straightforward, but it would still require a public hearing.
Okay, all right, nice.
So now, next is, now we're under the category of wastewater treatment projects. The first one is Bridge Hampton Beach Club. Bridge Hampton Beach Club is actually a nonprofit down by Ocean Road, if you know it. And they are doing a brand-new IA system installation there. They've asked for grant monies for that cause.
On what, on the basis of what flow rates?
They, we've worked that out, we have a recommendation lower than this amount, based on the flow rate.
Okay.
It's about $66,000 is what we'll recommend, because we normalized it.
What is the occupancy that's based on?
I honestly didn't, I can tell you.
I just have, I have, just an aside here, a little concern, you know, seeing Hampton Coffee where they, they, they applied for a system that ended up costing them almost $100,000 because of changes that were made on seemingly lower occupancy than that. So I think this is an area that we need to be really cautious about.
Sure, and we have, and we have P.W. Grosser that can come in and talk about it.
Well, it was more the change orders that came from on the.
Well, Bridge Hampton Beach Club is really an open-air pavilion, so it's really just the bathroom, you know, it's already, it's not.
Is this a low?
That's what I'm saying, does it qualify under residential septic?
No, it qualifies under commercial.
Are they mandated to put in a system, or is this a voluntary project?
This is a voluntary project, they're not adding more than 25% of floor area, and it's not a new.
Are they doing an addition?
They are, but it's like an open-air.
It falls under the 25%.
So they're not required to do this?
No, it's a high priority area.
So you might encourage them.
Although it's a not-for-profit, it is a fairly exclusive facility, isn't it?
Yes, so that's, you know, this has to be something that, this is a policy decision for you.
Well, it's also, I mean, it's, that's why I wanted to make sure that it was something that they were doing voluntary, not mandated.
They were telling us, you know, we've had the same septic system since the 60s and we're happy, and now they're, you know, maybe the health, it may be mandated, because the health department is telling them they need an IA, but the health department doesn't, I don't think they have authority. So they, now they wanna do the IA, they wanna do the.
Particularly in the watershed where it's in.
Yeah.
Is it gonna increase the number of tables?
They are increasing kitchen capacity, but we've adjusted for that, the committee. So our recommendation is going to reflect that.
I wanna take a little more careful look at this.
Absolutely.
The other thing, no, are they, they have water on both sides of them, or just the ocean side?
Just the ocean side, did I bring the plans?
And the reason why I say that is, you know, we only have a limited number of dollars.
Yeah.
And, you know, the ocean, you know, though it's, it's a nice idea to, you know, to remove nitrogen from all sanitary systems, you know, the inner harbors and bays and wetlands are where we have a much larger problem than the ocean really, because the ocean's a saltwater body and, you know, the.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's why we have a water quality board to make those determinations.
Well, you could prioritize how you want.
Yeah, but I'd like to hear it.
I'm just weighing that in, just as.
No, it's something that's definitely talked about.
As a chemistry major, so, you know, people have saltwater pools, they do it for a reason. Chlorine ion, you know, displaces the hydrogen ion on the nitrogenous waste and volatilizes it. That's why the ocean doesn't particularly have a nitrogen problem.
We asked them for updated information to tell us if the groundwater flows to Mecca's Bay here, and they're gonna give us that information.
That would be a big difference.
We said the same thing.
And that's something we fought for.
We wanna know the groundwater modeling here, and they said they would give us that. So this is a little premature still, we don't know if this is ready, because we haven't gotten that information.
Okay, it's something I'd wanna look at, but, you know, I don't, I don't wanna diminish the proposal if they're voluntarily looking to upgrade their sanitary system. But it sounds like there may be some benefits, additional seats and things like that. It is not, although it's a not-for-profit, it's very different than, you know, other not-for-profits.
That's why I wanna hear the whole recommendation from the board before.
Right.
Membership board.
Absolutely.
They did point out to us that there is a conservation easement on this property to Conic Land Trust. So I wanted to confirm that they could in fact do a small expansion and also change the infrastructure, and they are permitted under the easement, just wanted to make sure.
So this is what I'm saying, like, we have a couple more things to review on this one, why we think it needs a little more time.
Okay.
Similar to the next one is the North Sea Beach Colony Waste Water Improvement Project. You're familiar with the North Sea Beach Colony, because they just did an erosion control district. This actually, the spreadsheet is wrong, it says IA system installations for 62 parcels, it's really only 25. The whole beach colony consists of 62, but they're only proposing 25 at the moment.
This is the one with the Conic Baykeeper, and we couldn't find space for a cluster system.
Would be like the first clustered system?
No, it's not a cluster, they want to do individual IA's across these 25 parcels.
But get an economy of savings based on them all purchasing at a similar time.
Sean O'Neill from the Conic Baykeeper approached us and pitched this to us.
Although their numbers don't really flush out, so we really need to work a little more on this, because if you did the math, 25 homes times 20,000 we would give for rebates would equal half a million, not 867,000. So this, they're 367,000 over what we would give on a rebate.
According to what I have here, it's 34,680, if you divide 867 by 25.
Right, it certainly, now, and our rebates are income-based.
And this doesn't prove that out, because so.
So they potentially could be getting more rebate than they would be entitled to under our.
And many of these parcels have significant issues in terms of grading and whatever. And so they, they did look, they did a nice application, and I really think that this has a lot of merit. It's just how can we do this, and also tap into that county and state money? It would be such a waste for us to not utilize that money, that has no income restriction, by the way.
Well, they might have, in calculating their number, they might have figured in some of the, you know, engineering costs.
They did, but there's no economy of scale there, and we talked to them about that. Because, you know, they're, they're talking about, you know, we were like, well, if you have a surveyor doing 25 lots, they shouldn't be charging you so, you know, so there's more work here that needs to be done, and we really need to work with the county.
I mean, it would be a big deal to get 25 IA systems into one neighborhood.
Totally, but we just have to be equitable, because in some cases you would be giving maybe $40,000 a lot here. And that's not fair.
That's, it's completely different than what we're experiencing in the real world right now. So these numbers are definitely out of sync here.
And we, we really support, the committee is really interested, and I know you are too, but it's just getting the numbers down and leveraging maybe what we would be willing to pay with these other funding pots, because just going through the CPF is not.
It seems also, I mean, there's 62 lots in the entire area, and 25 are on this list. My guess is that some of those 25 are like next to each other, and why couldn't they share one system?
Well, that's the other thing, we haven't really looked at, like, is there a lot we can purchase in this area? Just put wastewater treatment. I know the terrain is funky, it's very different.
In our meeting with Sean, that was a question that was asked, and they indicated that there wasn't. I, I don't think that that's actually the case. I would rather see the 62 or even the 25 put on one system because of the economy of scale here.
Well, that's a sort of a different thing than what I'm saying. I get that, if you could make it a clustered system, that would be great. But even if you can't, some of these houses that are next to other houses, this, it would make sense for those two to share one if we can work out an agreement.
That's what I'm saying, we need to talk to the county, we need to get more involved.
Instead of building 23 of these, maybe you only have to build 15.
Well, there's only one expandable system, so it has a lot to do with the technologies of the systems themselves. So they are, they are geared towards residential, you know, to approximately five homes. One of the systems, so what I'm saying is that if you have, if you have a two-bedroom house and a three-bedroom house next to each other, they could share a system, right? If you had a five-bedroom house and a five-bedroom house, there's no system that they could share. And that has, you have to lay that out, so there's a lot of work still here to see what's actually going on.
I really think we need to, we need to take a closer look at this and try to get it where it needs to be to fund it. I don't think it's there yet, personally, this committee. And we love the idea, it's just the justification isn't fully there yet. The cost benefit analysis is not there.
And the income issue, there needs to be vetted through each of the participants to see how much they would contribute under the residential installation.
Right.
And how much they can get from Suffolk County.
Right, well, Suffolk County has basically said they would batch the applications, but it's still up to the individual homeowners to apply. This is kind of a scenario where the Conic Baykeeper is acting as intermediary and applying for everyone.
It's a good idea from.
Doesn't entirely work in our system, it's new, so we just need to figure it out.
We need to see the economy of scale, because we're not seeing.
And it's a good idea from a distance, but it may, you know, it looked good. Maybe these are the issues that are coming out of this that may be a little prohibitive.
Yeah.
We need to know that if we're gonna go this route, that we have gotten more IA systems in for our dollar than we would have otherwise had we treated this individually. Right now it looks the opposite.
And like Janice said, this is certainly worth looking at, and I applaud the Baykeeper for going after this, because it is challenging. In addition to the IA systems themselves, there's also legal ramifications between different lots and how people own those lots and sharing septic systems, so there's a lot to unravel and unpack here.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we'll keep it on the list, but I don't know if it'll make it yet for this funding round, but I think that we just need to work with them and the county to see how this can, and create a real scalable program for this kinda thing. That's what they intended to do, that was their whole application, but we're, but it's still got a lot of like uncertainties involved that we can't really account for on our end, you know what I mean?
Yes.
So that's that one. The next one is Quogue Wildlife Refuge. Unfortunately, we were very happy to see this one come in, but they never gave us, it was very incomplete. They never followed up, they didn't give me a budget, they said they weren't ready, so we're just gonna take this off. But they'll come back, we'll get them to come back.
Okay.
The next one on the list is West Hampton Beach School District, working with New York State Center for Clean Water Technology. And this is, they are looking to, this is actually phase four in the West Hampton Beach's overall picture of fixing their Moneyball Quantuck Bay water quality issues. But they want to design and install a nitrogen-removing biofilter, which they can come and explain all this to you, it's quite.
It's a horizontal PRB.
It's a horizontal PRB, it's like a layer cake, you might have heard those terms. And they do this in connection with the existing sanitary system that's already there. They have these wood chips, it becomes like a science project.
But this isn't, this is a pilot, because these aren't approved yet, right?
They said that the health, and that was our first question to them. They said the health department has allowed them to place them in, even though they don't have provision, because they were, they're working in connection with a sanitary system, so they're not in loom.
So instead of going to the cesspools, it's gonna go to a.
It's gonna get like piped through this thing.
It's a leach field.
It's kinda complicated for me to explain it, but, but.
The last phase of the current system.
But I wanted you to know that the full extent of this, first they are asking for $200,000 for the characterization, design, construction, like all that, and then the ultimate thing is that it would, you know, the second year is a 1.3 million construction cost, which they, we asked them for a cost benefit analysis, they told us that it's the equivalent of 60 homes.
But this isn't Department of Public Work?
60 or 16, sorry. No, this is the six-zero, this is the school district.
Yeah, but I mean, the approval on something on this size, it's still being run for the health department?
Yeah, oh yeah. So this, we think this is a work session, I think this is a work session.
Yeah, there's a lot to this, because my first, my other question would be, with the flow that we're taking from Gabreski to West Hampton Beach, you know, I think it's 90,000 that's available.
60.
Is it, oh, it's even less, so it wouldn't serve to hook this up into that system at all. That kind of stuff, I think we need to discuss in some.
I do, and I think you need to discuss it with Chris Gobler, you know, more importantly, the scientists in the room. So this one I would.
So it's 1.3 million is the construction, and then 200,000 is the design? So it's, the total ask is 1.5 million?
Yes.
And you said it was equivalent of 60 homes, which would be then $25,000 per home, which is more than our grant, typically we provide 20,000 a home, so we have to look at that, too, in terms of bank for the buck.
But what they have available from the county, it could be 31,000.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know that, so they would have to apply, I mean, there's a lot to ask.
No, this isn't 60 homes, this is just for the high school.
I thought you said 60.
No, the equivalent, we're trying to always right-size this based on what you're giving out for.
Is it, no, no, so 60,000 gallons we were talking about, he's.
Let me just start taking a tack.
I'm totally confused here.
60,000 gallons is not what we're talking about right now, that's the downtown village.
That's what's available from the Gabreski system, that's gotta bypass this, so let's put that aside.
So they're asking for this for the schools.
Right, what is the flow, do we know for the school that they are?
See, that, these are, this is information that I've asked them to.
But you're saying it's equivalent of 60 homes?
That's what they told us, I didn't like really check their man yet.
Yeah, it doesn't sound right to me at all.
That's what I'm saying, this is a work session.
Sort of what I was saying, that if they're looking for 1.5 million dollars to treat the equivalent of 60 homes, we could give 60 homes IA systems for less money than this.
Yeah, so. So my comment on your process is, you come a little early and we get into the grass quickly, I'm just gonna throw it out.
But you see my dilemma now, that you're going through this, right? Because there's certain levels of.
But I'd rather, I'd rather you and the water quality board go through that dilemma, and then come back with.
We have it, but I wanna understand, like, I don't wanna put people in a public hearing forum that you don't think are ready to be there.
Yeah, that's, and that may even be exec session, I don't know at some point. I don't know at some point where that we see a report and then we have a work session to talk about it, something ahead of time.
Well, you know, open meetings law requires you to talk about this in public.
No, no, I mean, so that we're better educated rather than seeing it like this for the first time, that maybe we have a little bit more of an abstract on some of these when we, before you come and start talking so we don't.
Before a work session. Okay. Sure. And I, you know, and if that's, you know, I apologize.
Is this the school board or the school district asking for?
School district. Yeah. Well, Chris, you know, kind of pitched it to the school district. The school district superintendent and board gave us a letter of endorsement.
Who's New York State CWT?
The Center for Clean Water Technology. So what would happen is even Center for Clean Water Technology isn't really doing the work. They would get an engineer to design it all and they kind of are the middleman reviewing that. And the school district would be putting it out to bid and all that kind of stuff. So they would be doing all the work in that way.
Let me say two things. One is I love targeting school districts because there's, like, that's where all the kids are all day. We're able to put one system that treats a lot of nitrogen. I think that's a great direction for us to look at.
Nitrogen reduction.
Yeah, in terms of removing nitrogen. I think that's, we get a lot of, we should get a lot of bank for the buck. And I love this layer cake system because it's non-proprietary. It's all, you know, should be a low-cost system to install. It's showing tremendous nitrogen reduction, but the numbers aren't adding up here. So it does, there's something wrong here. It should be 1.3 million.
And the technology is not adding up either.
That was their best, you know, guess. And that's why I want them to talk to Frank Russo. They did one for spring school, I believe. And so they can talk to you about the cost. They base the cost off that.
Yeah.
And the $200,000, the characterization and design, that should really inform the costs. So these are ballpark estimates.
Yeah, I mean, you're basically creating a discharge area with layers of sand and wood chips and sawdust, whatever. It's not, the materials aren't that expensive. It should not be so expensive. I don't understand it's 1.3 million.
And that's why I think you can talk to them about that.
There's a lot of ifs in there and also the ifs relative to the technology as well. The reason it's being prioritized is that it needs to go, you know, that's the whole idea is that you have to see it over time, how it's working. And there's a bit of a risk for the school if the technology doesn't actually.
Well, he does have some fairly good data that is worth seeing.
And that, I think that's part of this decision.
I was a real skeptic until he did the presentation, so I think it's worth you having a presentation. So I would recommend work session.
And the wood chips should be free because we have lots of wood chips that are available.
Well, I think they have to, I don't know. That's.
There's a lot more to it.
You're saying this is all the pine peels? There's dead trees all over.
Everywhere.
I like the idea of the school district because of the seasonal nature. And they have, they have a sewer district over there that really gets a lot of flow in the summertime and schools are in session off that time. In other words, in the wintertime.
Right.
In other words, so that could work well on that system.
What sewer district are you?
I'm sorry, I'm calling it a sewer district, the West Hampton Beach.
Oh, okay.
Well, speaking of West Hampton Beach Sewer District, that's the next one. It says stormwater products on the top, but this is wastewater treatment. So this is, now, here's where we get into these process conversations, right? We, now you've got your tracks. I always tell you, kind of look at it like a pie chart, but you've got your tracks of what you're funding, reduction, remediation, and restoration. And under reduction, these waste, but now these wastewater treatment projects can be extremely costly. So this doesn't necessarily bode well in a competitive forum where people are asking for, you know, 200,000 or 20,000 versus like 4 million. So the question is, this should be vetted separately? This should be considered by the board and maybe reserved, the way you did with the infrastructure for East Quag? We just talked about how much we even have. This far exceeds that. We've worked out, you know, maybe they can come and talk to you either as a work session or whatever.
Is that, by the way, is that the full cost or is that?
No, this is a fraction of the cost, but we've adjusted for what we've been doing. We did the calculation. We come up to like 3.3 million.
What have we given them already in the last round?
You gave them 1.3 million for the design, the specs. And then we gave them, the separate project was a drainage project, which was.
And there should be some grants available. I thought the.
They did get grants. You know, they need to finally figure out like what they're getting from everyone. They've figured out the grants, whatever.
The state put aside a lot of money for this kind of thing.
So now they're asking you for 4 million. So you have to make a decision and whether or not we recommend less than that. It's just a different, it's a different animal, right? It doesn't belong in this like kind of competitive. It's just a major infrastructure project that kind of needs its own consideration, is my point.
And that's why.
And we're doing, as we're doing this, we're realizing like some things are minimal and some things are very big.
And that's why I, what's missing here is the recommendation from your water quality board so that it doesn't become political. It doesn't end up being a decision that's made sort of outside the sphere of, you know.
We absolutely have our recommendation. And we will have that, but I just want to understand how these are going to be processed because there's lots of different things happening at once. So in order to get it to you and through a public process, that's all I'm doing. And you'll have your recommendation and you'll make your decision. Either way, it's going to be in the public.
To me, that would be the first step. I would like to see that before, so that I feel fully informed before I start bringing in.
And you're not weighing in right now?
No, but we kind of are.
This is just like, I wanted you to know what you've got in front of you. I just wanted you to know what we have. And that's really just.
Can I ask on this project, so let's say we gave whatever amount of money toward this project and now people, businesses start to hook in and they may try to, you know, get uses that they weren't otherwise able to do because now they're on a sewer. Maybe they'll put in a second story or whatever the village zoning allows, wet uses and things like that.
We've done that calculation and that's why we'll recommend less than this.
All right. So those people will, A, we're not funding.
Can't fund extra growth.
We're only funding the baseline growth.
The existing existing.
What exists.
So if they said, oh, we're repurposing, we're going from a dry to a wet, to us, that's adding growth. So we are only staying on whatever the existing.
And then are they going to be charging connection fees when people, do we get any money back when they do? Or no, that's going off the additional?
I don't think so. This is, they're asking you for a grant.
Right. Do we know the total cost?
I think if they said 15 million, although they haven't done their design and specs that you paid for, so we're waiting.
So typically, you know, this is the county sewer district.
This is too premature to even really.
I know. I mean, I don't even know why we're seeing that because we've got to get through them.
Well, you're seeing it because they've applied and because we want to tell you that we think that you need to keep going with this conversation. The advisory committee will advise you and we need to understand the formula because there'd be many of these.
I need to understand it because it'll be county sewer district. It already is a county sewer district without a lot more people in it. And typically, when somebody connects to a county sewer district, they are charged a connection fee.
Yes, absolutely.
Which will go to Suffolk County.
Which is 60,000 gallons.
I just want to make sure that they're adjusting that connection fee, they're not charging them for the money that we provided for the baseline.
No, I think what happens is they take off, say it's 15 million, and they get a million from the state and they get 2 million from here and 4 million from you. Then in the end, that, whatever that cost is, gets distributed as the fees.
Distributed, okay.
Yeah, but those numbers, whatever's granted gets taken off the top.
Okay.
But that's another, you know, that's, this is a work session, but I also think it's premature and I also think it's really next round.
I want to help the village with this.
If you want to do it, you should be reserving the funds as a major infrastructure project.
Well, I'd also like to understand the full use of the system at Gabreski. So they're taking a portion of the available flow, but I don't even understand what the relationship, if there's a fee charge from the development that's depended on that up at the airport right now. And if there are costs associated with that, we should be able to back those costs out from what we're going to pay for.
Right. Plus, most of these costs are really, it's not really a wastewater treatment issue. It's really an infrastructure expansion.
Let me finish, Janice. Go to opinions to find out if this is even fundable in certain respects by CPF. You know, that's important because I don't understand the relationship between who's actually operating that sewage district plant up there. I don't know who's operating it. It's a county facility, right?
County operated.
Yeah. But they're going to charge who?
The users of the district.
Right. So I don't, and I think it's a good point that the supervisor's bringing up because that could be a significant amount of money that they may charge for 60,000 gallons of treated flow.
We want to make sure they're not double charging them.
Plus the cost pumping it up.
Charging them for money that we laid out.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they are, we should be getting it back then for our water quality program.
Well, is it a loan or a grant? That's the question.
Well, that's it. And so there's a lot of unknowns here.
So, right. So, but I think we had to continue the dialogue and get them to come here in a work session.
Can I ask you to talk about staging a project like this? And I think we have staged other projects, but I just want to make sure we can do that. So let's say we encumbered a million dollars a year for the next four years. Let's say it was a $4 million project. Can we, is there a mechanism that we can legally do that?
Yes. You mean roll it over?
You'd have to approve the full project.
Yes. You have to reserve the full project and then, and then incumbent. So I'm saying you might want to do this early next year and whatever the number you feel comfortable with and then just reserve it for this project so that the granting, the rest of it, you know, we're not, you know, competing for the same funding if you've already decided that you want to give them whatever it is.
Right. But you guys need to tell us based on.
And we absolutely are going to tell you. And I apologize, you know, I thought that instead of, because my idea is that you should really hear the proposal before you hear what we recommend, right? Where you're getting recommendations and things.
Well, I mean, a list would do, you know, to be honest with you.
All of these we recommend in some way or another. So everything's here.
We're going to ask your applicant these questions.
Hundred percent. And that's what I think you should be doing.
Yeah.
All right, let's keep going.
All right, keep going. And then these are the last ones. So that was the last wastewater treatment. Now we're under aquatic habitat restoration. The first project is a proposal by iconic baykeeper with the trustees endorsement. And this is for the, in Cold Spring Pond, right here. They're asking to do a, it's called oyster nitrogen bio-extraction and restoration project. Where they're basically, it's an aquaculture project where they would grow 60,000 to 80,000 oysters, 5,000 retained for an educational program, and move on from there. So this is a small cost annually for four years. The startup cost is 35, about 35,000.
What's this plus 19? It was like 55,000 times four. Not that small a project.
No, it's about 100 and, what, say 20, 40, 60, 80?
For 60 to 80,000 oysters.
19, 8 per year moving forward.
Yeah.
I don't understand this.
If they're growing 60 to 80,000 oysters while you have 5,000 being retained for an educational program, where are the other 55?
Oh, they're going to the trustees to put in various other waters to seed, you know, put them around town.
Do we have control that they're not just then getting scooped up and, you know, and then sold?
Yeah, we said the same thing and they said, you know, part of it is actually remove, you know, we don't have that assurance. You know, East Hampton had this very program. They think it's an excellent program. Whether or not you want to do it here, I think you need to have a presentation made to you by Peter.
I just want to make sure if we're buying 60,000 dollars worth of oysters and putting them out there, somebody's not harvesting at some point and profiting from them.
They maybe.
I mean, we run almost that much number of oysters through Tiana at no cost.
At some point, and that's for bio-extraction, you're getting the nitrogen out as well. You don't want them to deteriorate, you know. At some point, you do want.
Well, just I think we need, we have a fiduciary responsibility.
Absolutely.
Somebody knows exactly where the oysters were then placed. They have obviously an in-sat.
And I think you need to talk to them about that. And so this is a work session.
You know, if they're ending up in a sanctuary where they can't, in a no-take sanctuary where they continue to remove, you know, algae or something like that, it might make a lot of sense. And is it really a nitrogen-removing or an algae remediation project?
Well, removing out nitrogen through the algae.
Janice, just a question about the numbers here. You have 34, 6,000 plus 19. So that would be roughly 56,000 in the first year and then 19?
No, the first year is the 34 only.
Oh, okay. And then the 19?
For the four subsequent years. Any technology that gets done has to last at least five years and that's why the proposal is in that way.
Okay. Thank you.
So I just, you know, for comparison's sake, at Tiana, we're growing comparable to this or more, just in a community garden at no cost. So I, you know, we need to look at this in comparison to other programs we have, you know.
So, right. And so the committee was hesitant, you know, we're going to make recommendations, you know, in some instances, like in CPF committee property, you don't necessarily, you know, do you want it to be that kind of situation where we're making that judgment call and you, you know, never know it? Or these people have a chance to come and talk to you about work session we give you and recommendation, and then whether or not they progress to a public hearing?
Like many of the other projects, I just need to know more detail.
Yes, and that's why I think that you need to hear it from a horse's mouth.
It's an aquaculture project. I just.
Yeah.
No, actually, I don't.
Need to know the details.
What I'd like to hear from is, is from the Water Quality Board, which is, its mandate is to look through these things and give us, inform our decisions so that we can ask the questions that we need to ask.
Of course. But the question is, are you wanting any of these in front? Not, you know, there's like this sense of elect to consider? Or you just wanted us to say, like, these don't make the cut, and these are the ones that do?
I think John is on the right track here, that perhaps the board is acting in a way that the Water Quality Committee should be.
We did all of this, and we have our recommendations, and we're planning on giving them to you.
And I want to trust those recommendations.
We want to be sure that everyone gets their due process also.
There's a lot of money.
Is the question here. Because if, you know what I mean?
Are we circumventing this Water Quality Committee?
Not at all. We want to give you recommendations. We have them. We think that you should also hear the project proposals.
Well, I, you know, here's my, here's my problem with this, is that you have, like, the Quag Wildlife Refuge that's incomplete, can't move forward.
Oh, we know that.
I see that on paper. I don't want to, you know, I don't want to have a discussion with an applicant that's not ready for it.
No, and so, okay, so maybe it was a mistake to come here and talk to you about it.
I don't think it was at all. I like hearing this because the numbers on this are so, I mean, they're, particularly the West Hampton Beach one, which we really do support and want to see in. But that's four million dollars, and the others are twenty. I think this, I think we're being asked for a little guidance here as far as, you know, where the money is to go, since we will be the last word on this.
Well, we have our recommendations, and we just are, like, certain things I want to put on the agenda for a public hearing. Certain things I want to put on the agenda for a work session. And certain things I want you to know, we've, we've received them, but they're not going anywhere yet. And that's really the point we're meeting.
The public hearing that you had, and I can't speak for other members of the board. I watched that. I think I watched it twice. It was pretty cool, you know, and it was interesting, and I sat there, whatever, and I, and I watched the thing, and I got informed. And then we got the actual plans, and I felt very well informed with those.
Okay. We just thought we would do it a little differently because the stakes are a little higher, and it's a lot more involved. So instead of us doing it.
And they are, and as far as.
We wanted you to be able to have the work session with our recommendation memo, vetting out everything we think. But so you have the ability to hear it and ask the questions as well.
And the distribution of funds with that information and the scientific recommendations from your board, I think, really should guide us.
Okay.
So can I, have you had your work session with these new projects still?
We've talked to all of them. They have not been videoed.
It hasn't been videoed. So, I mean, maybe that's it. Maybe you.
We already know all of these. We've asked all these questions. We have a recommendation for all of them. I'm just trying to figure out the track they belong to get out in front.
But I think we're saying is, we don't have, I think those recommendations we need to see before we can, or at least for me, to decide, okay, which one should we have a public hearing with and which one should we have a work session with?
And one of the questions I'm hearing is, like, to what degree shouldn't someone who's asking for nineteen thousand, and we think it's a slam dunk, actually have to come in and present?
Well, I think for the public's sake, it's worth having them out here for public.
Well, then that one perhaps can go straight to public hearing. If everybody thinks, oh, that's great, and we see, it looks really good.
I think some of the, I think what I'm hearing, and I don't know if I need to go any further, is that we had a good process, but maybe changing it, you might be uncomfortable because I'm putting it in front of you.
Well, the one good thing about this, I mean, if you're telling me these were already vetted by the Water Quality, and they all were reviewed, I, I think coming here maybe first, say, these are all the applications that came in, we could then say, well, okay, this is something we want the Water Quality Board to consider when they're deliberating.
Right.
You know, like, you know, the question about the oysters and where do they end up at the end? How long are they in the bay, you know? Are they, are they going to be commercially harvested at the end? Who, where will that money go?
Do they reside certified zones, uncertified zones?
Right, right. And that's all good. All good stuff.
You know, or the shell's going to be used for the reefs, reef construction? I mean, there's a lot of things to that. On its face, it sounds like a good project. We want to have these things really thoroughly vetted by that committee and then come to us. If you want to do a preliminary kind of looksee at the town board level, if it's something that we know we won't consider, so we don't waste their time?
Well, that's kind of also.
Or we don't think it conforms to the program, or it's not a direction we want to go? It's possible, but then we could probably do this much quicker.
And I understand your, you know, when you did the televised stuff, those were fairly straightforward projects. So you're a little concerned, and I get that. I think we can wade through that. It would be nice to see that ahead of time. Your recommendations, your list, like I said before, I think you're on the right track, but I personally really like to sit back as a non-participating observer and see the, the exchange between the applicant and the board, the Water Quality Board. I think that's really important because that informs our decision.
Okay.
In the first place, and then the complexities of it as overall.
Right.
In other words, townwide. So, you know, that I think is probably more a decision that comes to policy within the town board itself.
Okay. So, I don't know if you want to go any further.
Yeah, let's just, we're almost there. We only have three to go.
Let's just.
The Mill Pond Association, we think this one is ready.
The Me Cox Bay sensor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Me Cox Bay is the last time you approved the water quality sensors as part of their aquatic restoration project. They're asking for two additional sensors. They went back and tried to design it all, and they're asking for two additional sensors.
That's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that one I think should go to public hearing.
But I also just should be informed that, you know, PEP, the USGS, is looking for places to put some of their monitoring systems.
Fantastic. Well, now we can talk about that in the world.
Yeah, talk to Joyce about that because that just came out. I think I forwarded it to you guys, but if I didn't, remind me. There may be no cost here, is what I'm saying.
Oh, really?
Well, because they may, their system, they may place their systems and help with whatever, you know, not knowing the actual details of.
Who maintains this equipment and protects this equipment?
SOMAS. SOMAS. It's a contract.
Because I was going to say, if you've got to put, I'm assuming it's like twenty-five thousand dollars a sensor?
One is like a land-based sensor, and one is another, like, floating buoy type sensor.
What is dynamics, hydrodynamics, but it's not chemical sensors.
I just want to make sure that they're not subject to theft, or they're insured, or all those things.
Yeah, I agree.
And protected.
And, okay, the next one is called Mill Pond Association, and this proposal is for carp removal and the construction of two floating constructed wetlands in Mill Pond.
This is a Princeton Hydro requirement?
This is a Princeton Hydro thing. I think they're ready to go to public hearing, and the committee supports this. We don't have an issue.
Yeah, I saw drafts of the report. It looks pretty good. I think the board should probably see that.
Unless you want to have a work session, they're kind of like under some tight timeframes. So at least the public hearing, the Princeton Hydro guy can come and present.
Yeah, I think you can move forward.
A lot of work's gone into this.
Yeah. And the last one is Sagaponic Pond. Now, first this came in, town trustees were just asking for budget toward inlet management. We, we talked to them at length about how dredging is not really a water quality project in and of itself. It has to be tied to a management plan of some sort. So they've come back with a, of management plan produced by Chris Goldberg. It's, I didn't even write the cost down. It's extremely expensive. I don't know.
What's HABS?
Harmful harms.
Oh, okay.
I think we just need to talk to them some more on this one.
Yeah. Well, they did this for Me Cox.
Yes, and we're all for that. It's just the cost associated with the newest, latest revision of a proposal is.
So this would be developing a general management plan for Sagaponic?
Yes, and we've encouraged them to do that. We were really happy that they responded so positively toward that. So, but, but we just need to, you know, get that to a place where everybody can feel comfortable. This is something that needs to wait, that we need to vet this a little more carefully.
Okay.
Yeah, particularly the multiple openings and closings of the inlet.
Yeah, right. So, so out of all of these now, we, we have a few work sessions, a few public hearings, and that's all I really wanted to know. And I also wanted you to know what we're looking at and what we're going to be providing specific recommendations to. If you liked it the old way, do that again. I thought maybe you would want it more, like, interactive for you versus me standing at the podium like, yeah, this is.
I think this has been productive in the sense that there's a lot of issues that came up that you can now take back to the Water Quality Committee just to make sure they've been properly addressed before they go to public hearing. It gives the presenters a chance to know what's coming at them.
Absolutely. And we, before we interview the people, we send them a letter with all our questions. Then they come in, and some, in many cases, they responded in writing. We'll get this all so that it can be posted online, you know, the ones that are moving at least forward for work, you know, public hearing, work on the ones for work session. So we want people to be able to perfect their applications based on all this feedback.
So my main concern is the, and I've talked to both of you, that I, I feel you're getting burdened with a lot of administrative overhead on this kind of stuff. So, you know, because my first reaction is, I'd love to see this list with a little abstract after, you know, as a discussion context next to an Excel spreadsheet that tells me what the costs are and, you know, what the ballots, the running ballots.
So we do have that. I just broke it out into two parts of it.
Yeah, so I'm saying, you know, you could be adding more layers here than, than you want.
You don't need. Okay.
I'm just, I'm concerned about that.
I apologize. I'm glad that you gave me some direction, and, you know, we'll work on, basically getting this into a form that you can feel comfortable with, that it's in front of you.
Excellent job, though.
But it's cool that, that we have this so widespread across the town, right? And so many different applications.
The best part is, like, the way we've done it is, it's kind of created like an emerging quality where things are self-organizing and groups are coming together, which has, you know, versus us trying to go out there and solve it all, you know? And so that's the best part.
I don't think there's going to be an awful lot of money available this year in this round. So we may not be able to do all these things.
Exactly.
Yeah, and that's, that's this column over here, you know, to weigh that against the diminishing total here.
We'll get the committee's recommendations, and then as part of that package, do you also want copies of the applications?
Where, I was going to post them all online. I'll give you the links like I did last time, so you don't have to worry about paper, because I, this is only one small pile of them.
Right.
Materials. And then the ones we discussed, I will schedule, and you'll see them on the work session agenda. So you'll know what they are.
So I just want to be, I just want to be sure, Janice, that in terms of lessons learned from the last round, that you're coming here with a suggested procedural change, that there's the basis of it, that we're not overlooking the basis of what you're proposing. As, is this part of, is this reaction part of what you learned last time? That you feel a need to have more steps before it gets in front of the town board?
I thought, you know, how you do in zone change applications where you say elect to consider, so someone doesn't go too far down the road without you saying, you know, I don't really think this is appropriate at this time, and we're really not focused here at this point. I thought maybe you might want to consider adding that in. Because there might be a point in time where you really feel strongly about one project, but you have ten other ones, and you're like, I, you know.
Well, see, I don't want to feel strongly about any one project. I want to see a metric that's untouched by any personal desire to push a project through because I think that's the right method to use. It's ultimately, our goal here is, is the restoration of our ecosystems.
Right. It just comes, and the way this project plan is written, it says you have, the town board may prioritize projects. So I was trying to get that sense.
Yeah, and I tend to look at the.
I like this idea. I think this is a good idea. Is this something that you don't want to see?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to understand it. I just, there's a lot to do. This represents, this is the tip of the iceberg, and what this, this Water Quality Board does to get to this point is a lot, a lot of work. And I understand the point that you don't want to just sort of kick something out because you don't understand it. You know, I think it's more important.
We are going to say, you know, like, this doesn't really, you know, this particular project doesn't have measurable water impacts, you know? Or it does, and it's costing you a hundred dollars in pounds of nitrogen. You know, we, we've got it down to that.
That also may be the part that's the board's purview, and maybe not your board's purview.
Well, I think some of the policy questions on what types of projects they're going to consider and how they fit into the overall budget, and then also on, you know, on a major project, you know, if it is something from a policy perspective you want to consider as part of this program or something else.
And I fully expect that policy to evolve over time. You know, as we start to see improvements in certain things, you know, we may, you know, reprioritization occurs. But I think that comes out of the analysis.
I mean, and also, you know, it just is like, next round, are you going to say we're funding up to X for drainage projects, funding up to Y for wastewater projects? You might want to put a cap. We've cast a wide net and not put a cap. But then you end up in these categories that are hard to compete in. One person's asking for twenty thousand, and another person's asking for four million. So, you know, they're not competitive necessarily. You want to put them in their buckets so they can compete at the same level.
And we may have more applications. This year you got twelve. What if we get thirty-five?
Well, right. I'm just looking ahead always into how to make this the streamlined process that everybody can understand. Because when people call me and say, well, what's the process? You know, I want to be able to have that nailed down. And I don't, you know, it's, we had it one way, trying to do it a little different so you're more informed. You know, giving some direction. But either way, I'm, you know, we're open to how I'm going to do it.
So I think everybody maybe gives us some thought, and we'll.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a great day.
Thanks, Janice. Thanks, Lisa.
All right. So let's go back to updates. I'll continue with a couple of things. I did have the opportunity to go visit with Moody's Investor Services because we're getting ready to go out to Bond to make a pitch for the town's credit to try to get us the lowest interest rates we can get. I was joined by Noah from Munistat, as well as Len Marchese, our comptroller. We went into Moody's right near the Freedom Tower, right there in Lower Manhattan. I thought it went really well. I led the presentation. They had some great questions. They talked about all the great things going on in the town. Some of the things we talked about here, like the investments we're making in infrastructure, the, the assessment base growing, assess valuation growing, all the good financial metrics that we've been experiencing. So I think it went really well. We should know very soon, maybe even today, as they release their report. I'm trying to maintain the AAA credit rating we were able to achieve just a couple of years ago from Moody's. So we'll know soon, and I, I think we did a good job answering all their questions and presenting a really great picture of the town's finances. I want to remind everybody, and Julie probably has this on her updates, May eighth, the straw ban, plastic straw ban goes into effect. I'll let Julie mention, talk more about that. John and I were able to attend the ribbon cutting for the Phillips Cancer Center, right? Did anybody else go? Johnny, Johnny, there? It was really amazing. We got to tour this facility. Southampton Hospital's opened this state-of-the-art cancer treatment facility largely through a tremendous gift from the Phillips Family Trust. And, you know, on behalf of the town, you know, we're so thankful. This is really an enduring act of love for the community and for all of the people who will be treated and hopefully cured at this facility. So I didn't get a chance to speak, but, you know, on behalf of the town, we thank them from the bottom of our heart and lungs and kidneys and brains and prostates and breasts and everything else that gets afflicted by cancer. It's really a great, great thing for, for the community. And many people did speak. Assemblyman Steele spoke quite eloquently, and several of the doctors and deans at Stony Brook spoke. And of course, Bob Challoner led the presentation. John and I got to tour it, and the equipment there is top-notch. You have to understand, like, when you're going through cancer, as unfortunately, you know, so many people do, and you're going through radiation or chemotherapy, you have to go this great distance to be treated, or you used to have to go a great distance. And, you know, you come back exhausted, you know, trying to drive an hour plus, sometimes in traffic. To have a facility like this right here in our community is extraordinary. And so again, just thank you to the Phillips Family Trust and to Stony Brook Hospital and Southampton Hospital for making this happen.
It was interesting, too, just as an aside, talking to some of the staff there that are all so excited to be working there, but also realizing that a portion of the staff, they have to drive from outside of Southampton to come here. So I was talking with a couple of the emergency room nurses and some of the oncology nurses, and they're really, really interested to help us to find affordable housing, to help staff. And so maybe we have some, we have a commitment to work with, with them as well to help provide housing that we so desperately need for this service. You know, it's just one of many, many.
I have to say, you know, during that tour, you know, we met some of the nurses and some of the radiologists. Everybody was so amazing. They were so, so skilled, so well-trained, but also so nice, you know, so nice to us as they showed us the equipment. And you could see the sense of pride that they had in this facility.
Except when we were asked to step back from the cyclotron.
The architect is Blaze McCoy, and it really is really a stunning, stunning building.
And it's set up so that cancer patients.
... after a potato barn, because that was.
Yep, right. It was a stacky-owned property, and there was an old kind of dilapidated potato barn on it not that long ago.
Yeah, not long ago. And I think they did a really good job. But I was impressed with the inside, the way it was laid out, you know? I don't know if any of you have seen, there's a movie about the Mayo Clinic. I think it's on Netflix. It's really worth the watch because of how, how this kind of stuff evolved. So they've really kind of taken that Mayo hospital market model to this. And so you have these areas where, you know, somebody's going through intense chemotherapy. There's a lot of time. It's, it's just set up in such a way. It's, and it's here locally, which is, I went through this with my mother, taking her into the city and back and back and forth, back and forth. And, you know, I would have given anything to have a facility like this out here. So I think this is a huge service to this town. So thank you, Stony Brook.
So let me mention another upcoming event. This is a, it's kind of an interesting event. It's a parent roundtable on Tuesday, May fourteenth, starting at six o'clock to seven-thirty at the Greek Orthodox Church. And this is on opioids, vaping, and alcohol use. You remember, we, we held a number of forums with the opioid task force. We did lots of community forums. We did one for youth. But we never did one for parents specifically. And this is really specifically for parents to help answer questions and to help them learn the warning sides of, signs of addiction and how to prevent addiction. And, you know, it's one of the big focuses of our task force was not just to take the drugs off the street, which our police department is doing an excellent job, and not just to get people who are users into treatment, therapy, but also to stop the next users and to catch sort of, you know, the patterns of addiction early. And this is part of that, working with parents, working with the schools. So again, this is going to be May fourteenth, six to seven-thirty at the Greek Orthodox Church. It's really an amazing facility they have on St. Andrews Road. And if you want more information, you can RSVP to C Conway, C-O-N-W-A-Y, at SouthamptonTownNY.gov. Or, you know, get in touch with my office or CRC, and we can give you additional information. And last thing I will mention, there is a hearing coming up on the proposed incorporation of East Quag that will take, take place on May thirteenth at six PM at the East Quag School. This is not a town board hearing. It's just the supervisor who's charged under the law with reviewing the petitions. This is not a hearing on whether you think incorporation of East Quag is a good idea or a bad idea. It is limited to the sufficiency of the petition that was submitted, whether it meets the requirements for holding a actual vote on incorporating East Quag. So I will be taking testimony in that regard on the sufficiency of the petition. And again, it will be May thirteenth, it's a Monday, at six PM at the East Quag School. And that's all I have left for updates. Anyone else want anything? Julie?
So our polystyrene and plastic straw and stirrer ban is going into effect on May eighth, as you said. The reason why I got involved is, was threefold. One is plastic has an effect on the health of humans and animals. Two, we have a huge trash problem, as you said. And three, we want to educate people about reducing and reusing and recycling. So all that kind of came together with the straw ban. Unfortunately, we did have the public hearing last Tuesday on the stir, the stirs that will be allowed at the self-service beverage stations. We can't adopt that until the following town board meeting, but I'm hoping that we will. But again, May eighth, please recognize what you're using. See if maybe you don't need to use that straw. See if maybe you can use a reusable bottle like this.
Can we do anything on the, so this law's going to affect on May eighth? Can we not enforce that piece about not having the stirs available?
I would say yes, we can't enforce that piece.
We cannot enforce it, yeah.
We, yes, right. Until, until we adopt it.
There's a grace period built into the law for, for implementation, correct?
No.
I don't know. No, this is.
I thought, I thought that there was an informal sort of grace period to allow people to, so strict enforcement.
We did speak about that, working with the, with the community and with the business owners to allow them, we did mention that we were going to try to work with them for, for a period of time.
Okay.
As I changed over.
It's kind of an informal thing, but.
I don't think we need to be the plastic straw police on May 9th.
Yeah.
Right, and we did send something out to businesses throughout Southampton Town, and if anybody has any questions, please feel free to call my office and we'll talk you through.
I was out to dinner last night, and this is a place in the village here, not subject to our ban, but, you know, my son got this big milkshake and it came with a paper straw, and I was like, oh, this has got to be a disaster, and it was great, it was fine.
Paper straws aren't what paper straws were when we were kids.
It was thick.
Oh, gosh.
And strong, and.
I might have a sample that I could show you in my bag.
He thoroughly enjoyed that milkshake and I think felt even better that he was drinking it through a paper straw.
Good, so it is possible.
It tastes better. It wasn't a Styrofoam cup, though.
I don't, I don't think so.
So it is possible to change your habits, which is, behavior change is a big thing in this whole.
It was great that the restaurant was voluntary, this is a restaurant that.
A lot of restaurants have voluntarily already started to change.
A lot of our businesses, I think, really see the value in this, so it's, it's good to see.
I just, Julie, I, you know, I just think you deserve great applause for moving this forward, it was, I thought it'd be a lot more controversial, it turned out to have broad base of support, but.
Well, again, I think people are realizing we need to do something, and even though it may be a small step, it's still.
No, but thank you for your leadership on this.
Thank you.
Mylar Berlins, that's what I'm expecting.
That's what's coming next.
Soon.
Any, any more updates?
Just one more on the South Fork Community Connection, I drive by the Hampton Bay's train station every morning, and the spots along Good Ground Road are slowly but surely getting taken up, so every day it's a few more cars parked there, so people are using.
And we did have a good meeting with Assemblyman Steele, like, trying to look at what issues we're having, you know, trying to fix things for next year, we had on the phone, Long Island Railroad, and, you know, there's not a, a lot of changes or tweaking that can happen this year, you know, we know that there's an issue with that first train coming from Spionk, but the second one only going to Hampton Bays, and to get to Hampton Bays, you have to endure the traffic just to getting, get there, so I think it's something we can fix for next year, probably not for this year, you know, but, but it's, it's a positive thing, we encourage more and more people to take advantage of it.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
That's it.
Tommy, John?
No, just the cultural committee trip, we're going to be redoing the Bollards at the Hampton Bays train station, I think that's a nice, will be a nice upgrade for the community, and public transportation takes time, people need to see it working.
John, anything else?
No.
All right, so we have a number of items for executive session, where is my list? Who has the agenda? All right, so we're, I have it here, all right, so we have acquisitions to discuss, we have a property acquisition potentially to discuss, a building acquisition, a contracts to discuss personnel and confidential legal advice, so I'll make a motion to end our work session and go into executive session on those items, executed by Councilman Bouvier, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, I don't know who changed my gavel, I'm.
It's like Thor here.
I know.